Good evening. Welcome to the May 12, 2014 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Father Maximus Habib from the St. Mark Coptic Orthodox Church with us this evening to give the invocation. If Father could come forward for the invocation, please stand and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, one God, amen. We thank our Lord for this great opportunity to allow us to gather together, to serve our community, and serving one another to grow, to be a safe, supporting one of the great communities in the state of Michigan and in the whole world. Without your help, without your support, we cannot do anything. But we know that through you, we can do everything, open our minds and our hearts, help us to listen to one another, and help us to support what is right and to go forward in serving our community from one day to another. Reward all those who are helping the community to grow and to be more and more well established and safe. And cry, Jesus, our Lord, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
I don't want...
Mayor Protem Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
I did receive a call from Councilman Fleming this evening that he's not feeling well. So I will move that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Fleming at the regular City Council Meeting of May 12, 2014, due to being ill. Second. Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Campbell that we excuse the absence of Councilman Fleming at the regular City Council Meeting of May 12, 2014. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming. Mayor Protem Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first story of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have the honor this evening of having Cindy Stewart, Community Affairs Director, in front of us to introduce our special person this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, it's my pleasure, I'm introducing Judge Hardig and Nancy Morrison from the Coalition. They're going to share with you about a special workshop or town hall meeting that's going to be held here this week.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome, Judge.
Good evening.
Nancy.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and members of Council, thank you for having us here today. We wanted to come to share with your honors, as well as with the citizens of Troy, that together with the Troy and Claussen Community Coalitions, this Wednesday, we will be putting on a heroine forum that's specifically geared towards the trajectory of prescription pain medications that leads to heroin abuse. This forum is extremely local-centric. It's really focused on the heroin problem here in Troy and Claussen, which is pervasive, no more pervasive than it is anywhere else, but there's a real disconnect between the problem and parents. Seventy percent of all recovering heroin addicts who are young became addicted as a result of sports injuries, which means the best and the brightest from good homes are becoming addicted to pain medication after an injury and switching to heroin. Why is this? Because heroin and prescription pain medication often has the same active ingredient, that is an opiate. There's going to be an amazing group of speakers here. I just cannot believe the caliber of speakers that we have been able to get. You're going to hear from Chief Mayor, from the DEA, from Beaumont Hospital, from Alliance Mobile Health, from a physician who will tell you why you can't always trust your physician. You're going to hear from Nancy, from the Troy Community Coalition. We will have many treatment providers onboard. The Police Department will be here with innocent-looking drug paraphernalia, things that a normal parent would never think twice about seeing in his or her child's backpack, or locker, or car, or room. And after attending this forum, that informed parent will be able to parent in a much more proactive way. We're also, as I indicated, going to have treatment providers here. I believe the Police Department has, will have these lock boxes, which we will recommend that all prescription medication be locked up in. There'll also be drug tests available. You'll also hear from a local judge, a woman who's been on the bench for approximately 20 years, and she's been running a drug court, very informed woman, very on top of it. She had a daughter who was a four-point O cheerleader, senior in high school. She thought she'd made it. She thought that she had gotten through the teen years without serious injury. She'd just gotten home from student-parent conferences, in which the teachers told her daughter had it all together, was an amazing young woman, and she should be very proud. That very evening, she realized that her daughter was a heroin addict. Her daughter went down to 89 pounds, and with all the power and knowledge that she had, she almost lost her. We are bringing this to our community because heroin exists in Troy and Claussen, the same as it exists in every other area. In Troy alone, through the statistics gathered from the Troy Police Department, since January 1 of 2014, we have had seven overdoses from heroin and two deaths. One was a 22-year-old Athens grad from 2009, who had been struggling with heroin addiction since she was in high school. I want to thank you very much for allowing us to come up and introduce our forum, and I would encourage all Troy members to come, parents especially of student athletes we're hoping to target.
Thank you. I think you summed it all up, right?
Thank you, Judge. Certainly appreciate what you're doing to bring this forward to our community. Thank you so much. We'll see you Wednesday night. Thank you. Our next order of business is C2, the Real Estate Forum Summary, introduced by Mark Miller, the Director of Economic and Community Development. Good evening, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of Council. As you may recall, on April 29, the city conducted a real estate forum where we invited stakeholders of the real estate industry, boards and committee members, and interested residents. And we had four topical areas, North Troy, Big Beaver, Maple Road, and Rochester Road. And the format included all of the participants to submit their concerns and their positive points, and then we bounced that information off of four experts in the community, one architect, real estate broker, a developer, Mr. Kerlik, and another developer. And this information is being utilized in the preparation of the five-year update of the master plan. And where we are moving to next is we will start to engage other groups of the community, including neighborhood and subdivision associations, and target specifically the geographic areas more closely in engaging specifically those areas to target them, to give... And this will continue down the process of the master plan update. Eventually, there will be some action necessary by City Council to decide whether or not to seek authority to approve it, and also the Planning Commission will start feeding this information and developing strategies and where we need to tweak the plan. And we did provide full minutes of the meeting. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller? It was a great packet of information that you provided. Having been at the forum, it was well put together, well thought out, and as somebody indicated to me, we got about $100,000 worth of free advice from many of the leaders in the community that offered their expertise to us for free. So it was a great forum.
Mr. Mayor, I think we helped a few deals get done, too, with all the real estate people in one place.
Yeah. I think that did happen, too. Yeah. But thank you. Thanks for you, Mr. Kishnik, for putting, the staff putting that together. I think it was very helpful. Next order of business is C3, which is the Economic Development Update, introduced by Glenn Lepin, our Economic Development Specialist. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council Members. I'd like to provide you an update of economic development activity here in the community. My last report was back in February, and since that time, economic development activity continues to be very positive. According to CBRE, which is a leading commercial broker company, Troy's office vacancy rate in the first quarter of 2014 was 22.8 percent. This compares to a first-quarter 2013 office vacancy rate of about 26 percent. Look at the five-year office vacancy average, that was about 26.7 percent. These numbers do not include the Kmart headquarters, because it is currently not exactly on the market, on the open market, so that, those numbers come out. If you add those numbers back in, it's about 4 percent, so it shows you how large that facility is for the entire community. So we're seeing those numbers going down in terms of vacancy, which is a very positive sign. We're also getting feedback from the brokerage community on office industrial markets, and they're also seeing heavy activity in terms of these markets. Feedback we're getting from the brokers, particularly industrial brokers, is that it's starting to get a little tight in terms of some of the industrial properties. The vacancy rates on industrial in the first quarter of 2014 was 6 percent. This compares to a first-quarter 2013 industrial vacancy rate of about 8 percent. The five-year industrial vacancy average is about 11.5 percent. So you can see the numbers getting pretty tight on industrial properties. We continue to work with the brokers to try and find appropriate uses for those properties. I'd like to highlight some of the recent projects since my last report. You're all familiar with the MJR Grand Project. That continues to be under construction. The grand opening date is currently June 20. That has been pushed back since the winter weather. It was originally going to be May, but now there seem to be full steam ahead for the June 20 opening. Second item, Mahindra. We've talked about that before. The Mahindra Technical Center has opened up on Square Lake Road, 1055 West Square Lake. And Councilman Campbell, Mark Miller, and I attended the grand opening celebration in Ann Arbor for Mahindra. They're opening up two facilities, one in Ann Arbor, which is a production facility, and then the North American Facility here. The governor was present, and also Mr. Mahindra, from the Mahindra Company in India, flew in for this. I can tell you the Mahindra Company is thrilled to be here in Troy with this technical center. They're going to be employing approximately 100 people eventually within three years. So it takes up a building that was vacant for a number of years. It used to be the old Hilex Building. So that's real good to see that Mahindra is going in there. It would be a terrific use for that property. Other properties that have come onboard recently, largest one being Molina. Molina is currently located on Big Beaver. They have office space there. Currently have about 312 employees at the Big Beaver location. They have purchased 880 West Long Lake for their new presence here in Michigan. They will be moving those employees over to the Long Lake Facility, and they're adding an additional 337 new employees to that site. That office building, which is the North Troy area, was vacant for a number of years as well. So that's 195,000 square feet, so it's a huge, huge property, and we're thrilled that they're going in there. And we work very closely with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and Oakland County Economic Development to work out a deal for them to come in there. It's also a relatively complicated deal, because at the same time, Molina was, is putting in office space downtown Detroit as well. So it's the coordination of all that that took place, and we're very happy to have Molina here. Modern Dental Laboratories will be moving its major facility from Bellevue, Washington, to here. They're a dental prosthetics manufacturer. They'll be moving into 500 Stevenson Highway. It's a 70,000-square-foot building. They'll have approximately 100 employees there on Stevenson. LHP Software is a company that is currently located here in Troy. They are expanding into a second location at 2468 Industrial Row. They'll be partnering with Specialized Vehicles Incorporated, and they'll be running a training center out of that facility for engines, engine training, and how to work on these engines, hybrid engines, and that sort of thing. So that's over on Industrial Row Section. LHP Software continues to grow and expand. They'll add 20 new employees to this new location. Several of us went to the opening for AET Integration on Crooks Road, 1775 Crooks. This is a research and development engineering company. Those employees, 18 professionals, they moved their headquarters from Wixom to here onto Crooks Road. Total Quality Logistics is an international freight brokerage firm, one of the largest ones here in the country, and they have taken up sales space in 3221 West Big Beaver. It's their very first location in Michigan, and they hope to do a lot more business here, and they continue to expand, so looking for continued growth there as well. Thirteen people will be working there initially. Trio Manufacturing had a site here. They moved into larger quarters at 1872 Ring Drive. They received some new contracts. They continue to grow and needed the extra space, and the company employs 10 people, with an additional 10 people expected to be hired shortly. So either to highlight some of the projects that are taking place right now that we've been working on actively, as with the above projects, we continue to work with the state, the city, and others to bring in new business into the city and to fill up some of the vacant space. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Glenn?
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. That concludes the Certificates of Recognition and Special Presentations. There are no carryover items, so next is a public hearing for the adoption of the 2014-15 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget. So I will open that public hearing, and City Manager Kishnik, did you wish to say anything on that at all? Are you...
You know...
Enough said?
I do have an hour-long presentation on the budget, but in the event that everyone's had enough of this budget, I want to thank everybody on both sides. Everybody has a role, whether it's the City Council staff and the administration and the employees in putting together such a great project. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and, you know, everybody deserves a credit for a very solid spending plan.
I agree. Somebody like to move the... Is there someone in the audience that wishes to speak tonight? I see Diane... I don't want to... Good evening. I didn't want to butcher your name, but...
Hey. That's fine.
Diane Z.
Diane Zignavovich. That's good.
Welcome.
A 27-year resident here in Troy. I just, I wanted to touch for a moment, with the adoption of the budget, at the end of all your hard work, I know there's been a lot going on. I've been following it at least through Troy Times. You've had focus groups, and I have not actually personally been involved in that, so I have not been in that level of detail with this, but I know that there's been a lot of hard work trying to come up with all the different issues and resolutions, and how we're going to address our current financial situation. You know, stepping back for a second, I just want to say, knowing that all the city has been through, I did become very concerned when I saw the title that was in our March 20 Troy Times that said, "Focus Groups Look at Ways to Spend the Fund Balance." And I, it really made me very uncomfortable, knowing the massive, massive, massive amount of work that has gone on to streamline, gain efficiencies, manpower cuts, outsourcing in a creative way. And when I saw this, I just became very, very concerned that are we actually going to be undoing a lot of the good work by just saying, now we've got, okay, we've got a little bit of revenue increase coming in, you know, we're starting to stabilize on home, you know, home values, and now things are moving up, and by, just by pure definition, that's going to cause, you know, the fund balance to become more robust than it was, and all these things. So it was very concerning to see that. And I just, you know, our very critical financial situation that we've been through, it's resulted in so many creative solutions. I mean, I've been very, very impressed seeing these different strategies and all the various synergies that have gone on in all the different departments. I myself went through a program, the Citizens Academy, that you have offered. I did that a few years ago, and it was excellent. Had an opportunity to learn about the very excellent staff that we have and everything within the, in all the different areas. It was, it was very impressive. And with that, and those, and the people have done a great job of synergies, and I've seen, I've just, I've seen the pride at the same time, when people have gone through and come up with, with other cities and other things, come up with very creative ways of handling the fact that they have fewer people, much less money, and all of that. It's produced a lot of very good things, at the same time of being difficult. So I'm just, you know, I want to just communicate that I'm hoping we don't lose that, that when you start getting a little bit more flush with revenues coming in from home values moving up, we've got, you know, a little bit more fund balance, we need to stay really focused. We are trusting the city to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. I share, and thank you for those comments, but we have three minutes, and we have to move on.
Yes.
And I can only say that unfortunately, we don't write the headlines that happen in newspaper, and our friends at the Troy Times, no offense, but sometimes they put things in the headlines to grab your attention, which I think that did. But I think Mr. Kishnik will agree with me that that was not the intent of the focus groups. It was just to get input to help us in our decision-making as we moved along with the budget process.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak this evening on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Councilman Pennington.
I would like to move E1, the adoption of the 2014-2015 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Mayor Protem Henderson that we adopt the 2014-15 Annual City Budget and Three-Year Budget as printed in the agenda. Mayor Protem Henderson.
Just to piggyback on your thoughts on the comments that came forward, you know, Brian and team have thoughtfully put together a plan to, I'm going to read what I wrote while she was speaking, but they thoughtfully put together a plan for maintaining a strong fund balance while continuing to right-size our spending. That's an ongoing project that I think we all hold pretty seriously, so, you know, I think this budget reflects that.
Councilwoman Hoderick.
I want to echo Mayor Protem Henderson's comments there, and together, council and staff are prioritizing that fund balance discussion. We, I think the community has even come to understand how important our fund balance is for our bond rating and for all the services we have. And if, in the sessions that we had, we even had a special study session specifically dedicated to understanding what level we needed to strive for with the fund balance. And I appreciate the City Manager and staff for helping us wrap our heads around that so that we can represent the citizens and the taxpayers in the best way on that subject matter. And I think, I think all of us at this table and staff have really come around understanding what that level should be, setting policy, and the budget really helps us go forward to do that while at the same time protecting safety, road concerns, and the things that matter to us every single day when we get up and use the infrastructure here in our city. It's been a phenomenal process. It's been a great learning. Those sessions are online and can be watched if you're, if you're wanting to do more of a deep dive. But I feel very confident that the process we've gone through and the staff has gone through to move forward here in the community has been really solid.
Thank you. Any other comments? Special thanks to the administration for all the hard work. I think we've discussed this enough. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks again, staff. Our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up this evening for this item, so we will move to regular business, as there are no postponed items. First order of business is boards and committee appointments this evening. I am going to bring forward the following nominated persons to serve on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And those names will be Rosemary Karnicki for the term that expires 4/30 of 2017, and Robert Schwartz for the term that expires 4/30, 2017. Those are the two names that I will forward for nomination this evening. I'm still working on two other appointments there.
Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Protem Henderson that we nominate for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Rosemary Karnicki and Robert Schwartz for the terms that expire 4/30 of 2017. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor...
I'm sorry, Ms. Stewart.
That's okay.
Bad habit.
Mayor Protem Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Motion passes. I would like to nominate for the Planning Commission vacancy Karen Collingsworth-Cruz for the term that expires 12/31/2014, that is now vacant by Robert Schultz's resignation.
Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Campbell that we nominate Karen Collingsworth-Cruz to the Planning Commission for the vacant position that expires 12/31/2014. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. We will not be nominating positions this evening, correct, for the council positions. There is no request for a closed session this evening. We are pulling item I4, the Troy Family Days item for this evening. City Manager Kishnik.
If we could just have Mr. Bolensip and Tom maybe just introduce what's happening so everybody knows what the situation is and what it is at least for the next year, and then on this sort of informational item, if you will.
Sounds good. Good evening, Kurt. Did you want to bring forward Mr. Kazupski?
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to bring them up. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The Troy Family Days Festival is now run by the North Woodward Community Foundation. The Troy Family Days Festival is now run by the North Woodward Community Foundation. Tom Kazupski, who is the executive director, is available if you have any questions for him behind me. He, they came to the city of Troy because they had exhausted all private property potentials to host the event because of the proposed sale of the south property on the Zion Church. So again, they came to the city of Troy looking for property to host the event. We met with them several times and we determined that Boland Park was the most suitable place. However, late Friday evening, it was informed that the south property on Zion Church was going to be available for the 2014 event. So what is being brought forward is for future consideration for 2015 and beyond.
Any questions for Mr. Bovensee? I'm sure that's a relief for this year and we'll, we'll talk more at the end of the year about the future. But I'm, I'm sure it's a relief for the organization and foundation.
Dennis is here.
Thank you, Tom. Did you want to say anything, Tom?
The only thing I would like to say is if we could get some direction from council. We have contracts that we have to sign and they're all coming up now. I've, I've been reluctant to sign them up until this point because of, of the uncertainty of where we're going to be and things like that. But if we do not sign those contracts for a three-year period, we will lose those vendors, namely Arnold Amusements, which we've had for about 32, 33 years now, and he will move on. And so if we could just get some assurance that this will still be available for us to use next year, Zion has already said that it will not be. So we, we were saved this year and thank, thank you, everybody, for all your help on, on where we've come to this point, especially Kurt here, who's been real good to us. And I think it was through the efforts of Councilman Fleming that Zion decided that it was a good idea to have it this year yet. But I would appreciate any, any sort of direction. I know it's, it's asking a lot, but some sort of a direction so that we know as we move down the road that I can honor those contracts in the future.
Mayor, the only thing I would say is in, in my communication to council after I heard of this on Friday, and maybe my dates aren't as good, you know, maybe October is too late, but we, you know, I would recommend a study session sooner rather than later where this is the only issue we talk about and we go, and we bring everybody forward and, and staff as a full review and full disclosure and full understanding of what we would be doing so we can work together and he doesn't get down the road and wonder what's going on either. And we don't wonder if we're participating or not, so we can all kind of move forward together. It would seem to be a good approach.
I think that's a good approach because I think, I don't want to speak from the entire council, but, you know, I think we need some answers ourselves to move forward. So a study session sounds like the right, right thing to do and we'll, we'll get that going pretty soon.
Let me know, then I will. Okay, I really appreciate all your help with this and we look forward to the 48th Annual Troy Family Days this year and the 49th and 50th, which is coming up in, in 16. So hopefully we can, we can get this resolved and we're amenable to working with the city who've been very, very cooperative up until this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you soon. Our next item of business is I5, the Oakland County One Stop Ready Communities to be introduced by Glenn Leipin, the Economic Development Specialist. Good evening again, Glenn.
Good evening once again. The city of Troy has been invited to participate in the 2014 Oakland County One Stop Ready Communities Program. This program enables communities to share best practices on key issues of planning, development, and building processes we share with other communities. In the 2013 program, seven communities were involved with this. The program enables participating communities to capitalize on their strengths and refine their economic development processes in order to advance each community's ability to attract, retain, and expand investment. Participation, participation in the program involves attending the One Stop Ready Academy, and this includes four sessions that are focused on best practices and information sharing. These sessions are open to interested staff, elected and appointed local officials, so you're all invited as well. Sessions are scheduled to take place in the early evening on June 25th, July 23rd, September 24th, and October 29th. These would take place out at Oakland County. Part of the ability for us to participate in this program is for the governing body to pass a resolution of support, which is what we will be asking from you tonight, and you have a copy of that resolution as well. From Oakland County, we have Brett Razigan here to talk a little bit about the program, to give you a quick overview. You have a one-page summary in your packet as well, and then both Brett and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have after that. Brett?
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Glenn, and mayor and council. Glenn did a, a very good job at explaining One Stop Ready. I'd like to go over it very quickly for you. It actually started back in 2012. Deputy Executive Matt Gibb got five communities together and just started a discussion on economic development and what makes a community effective at economic development. And last year, as Glenn said, we brought seven communities on board in a formal manner, and we're seeking seven more this year. And we have resolutions from Highland, Independence, White Lake, Orient Township, Royal Oak and Oak Park, and Troy would be the seventh community to come on board this year. And the discussions that we had with the five pilots and last year with the seven is that we're, we're finding in this, I think is obvious to communities, is that the, the answers on how to be effective lie with the communities themselves. The, the issue is that not everyone is good at everything. And so that's the idea, to bring communities together, share information, build off each other's strengths. And it's very much a, a rising tide raises all boats idea. That's the, the concept behind One Stop Ready. We do think that One Stop Ready communities have a number of attributes, and I, I thought it was interesting, when I was looking at your agenda, I looked at the council vision statement and goals, and a number of them are very much in line with what we feel an effective One Stop Ready community is. The only thing is you adopted these back in 2011, so I'm about three years behind, so I have some catch-up to do here. But your, your thinking in this, this paper and the, the strategy areas that were outlined are very much in line with what we're thinking about in One Stop Ready. What we hope to do, and the purpose of the program is not complicated. We want to work with a partner, as a partner with you, to help you capitalize on your strengths, refine your vision, and then really work toward the, the implementation and the planning and economic development. It's, the program's not intended to be a review of your master plan. The, the plan has been through the, the public hearing process and adoption process. We're focusing on taking that plan and working toward implementation. We do challenge you, though, to think like an investor, think about how your community is perceived, why would someone choose Troy as a location, and then also be very, very aware of deadlines that investors are facing. And when we, in One Stop Ready, when we speak of investors, we're not only speaking of the business community and developers that are interested in investing, we're also speaking of a resident as an investor. The residential community invests in maintaining their homes. They may want to add a garage to their property. They may want to put up a fence. All of those people that are investing time and money in their, in your community are important to the One Stop Ready philosophy. Two main components to the program, gaining your support and then the continuous improvement component. The, the resolution tonight is part of gaining your support. This is a draft that we provided for your consideration. We also ask that you designate a liaison that we can work with, and, and I believe that would be, would be Glenn, if you come into the program and you'd be working with Dan Riley. Dan is a research coordinator for the Economic Development Department. And we really need a, a person as a point of contact, and we feel you do as well. Dan will be your, your connection point to other county services throughout the department, and Dan will also be your advocate with other county agencies, Road Commission, Water Resources Commission, Parks and Rec, if you're engaged with any of those other organizations in, in any manner. The poster signing, as Glenn said, we, we're in the process of preparing a One Stop Ready poster. We very much would like to have all the elected and appointed officials and key staff members sign that poster and display it in the city hall. It's a symbolic gesture, we think, to show the community that you're engaged and, and interest in, in investors and investment in your community, and you're, you're aware of One Stop Ready and the self-evaluation improvement process. The program has four components. Glenn mentioned the academy, and Troy already has a connection to the academy. Last year, this session, an investor's perspective, our guest speaker was Alan Kerlik from Kirko. So Alan came out and talked about what he looks for in an effective community regarding economic development. He talked about the, the interface between the investor and the city staff and the elected and appointed officials, and it was a very engaging Q and A process with Alan. And this year, the session on implementation, I spoke with Mr. Miller and Dick Carlisle from Carlisle Warpman, and Dick's going to be our speaker on implementation. And I've asked him to, to speak about the, the good work that Troy is doing in their permitting process. We want to feature that in our workshop in, in September. So the academy is one component. The next component are tools and strategies. There, oh boy, there's, there's many, many things that are talked about when, in the planning and economic development field, but, but we feel there's five key things that are critical for a community to be effective at. That's the very clear and efficient pre-application meetings where investors get clear and early guidance and, and feedback on their project and the likelihood of their project fitting into the, the community's plan and ordinance. Internet accessibility, your material needs to be on the web so people can access that 24 hours a day. Proactive project tracking, a means to gather business input, and it sounds like you're already doing that with your forum that, that Mark spoke of earlier, and then a, a very clear and transparent and effective permitting process. The third component is, is marketing your participation. We want to talk about Troy being in One Stop Ready. We want to feature your successes in our eProsper newsletter and use our social media outlets to talk about the good things going on in Troy. The last component is a forum, and this is really just our fancy name for meetings. We want to be able to meet with Glenn and Mark on a regular basis, either in person or a conference call, to keep in touch with what you guys are doing and, and keep in touch with how we can help you be, be effective in, in the area of economic development. That said, in a nutshell, community support and main components of the program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? For yourself, explained through, it's like a good idea to me. Typically, when we pass resolutions as a council, we don't designate a specific name-
Yeah.
-as a liaison. We give that authority to the city manager, and then I'm sure he would-
Yeah.
-talk to you about who, who would, who would fit well.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If council would note that I5 has been placed on your table this evening, there is a change to the resolution that was in the packet, which changes the designee to the city manager or his or her designee as a replacement. So if the resolution is moved this evening, please move it as the yellow sheet that was provided at the table. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I move item I5, the Oakland County One Stop Ready Communities. The resolution is printed on the yellow sheet, unless you don't want me to read this, do you?
You're always encouraged to read if you want to. This, this city attorney likes it when we, when we read cer, some, but if you, if you want.
I think we've heard this language through the two presentations, so I'll move it as written on the yellow sheet.
Thank you. Move by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson that we approve I5 as printed on the yellow sheet provided on the table this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I6 is the approval of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the BRA, proposed fiscal year 2014-15 budget, also being introduced by Glenn Leipin. There was also a yellow sheet for I6 provided to council at the table this evening. Good evening again.
Good evening again. The Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority met on April 15th, and the board recommended approval of the 2014-2015 and three-year budget. And the budget reflects the recent payment to MJR from the revolving loan fund through the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and it also reflects previously approved payments to the, through tax capture for TCF Bank, which is a project that's been going on for a number of years.
Thank you. We also have some amended draft minutes that were provided to the council on the yellow sheet this evening also.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Leipin? Thank you, Glenn. Some would like to move the resolution. Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Like to move I6 as printed?
Support. Move by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve I6 as printed on the yellow sheet that was provided at the table this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I7 is the approval of the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, proposed fiscal year 2014-15 budget. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening. The Joint Local Development Finance Authority, the Troy Subcommittee, met on April 28th, and that authority recommended approval of the 2014-2015 budget and three-year budget as well. And that budget reflects regular kind of membership dues through the foundation to Automation Alley and helps support Automation Alley through foundation and infrastructure improvements in the Local Development Finance Authority district.
Any questions for Glenn? Once again, I7, an amended resolution was provided at the table indicating that it's a proposed three-year budget. Councilman Campbell?
I will move I7 ahead for approval based on the description on our yellow sheet of paper.
Support. Move by Councilman Campbell and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson that we approve I7 as printed on the yellow sheet provided at the council table this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I8 is the approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority, TDDA, proposed fiscal year 2014-15 budget, introduced by Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development. Again, I8, an amendment was provided at the table on a yellow sheet for a proposed three-year budget. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Excuse me. This coming up fiscal year is the first budget where we have the amended development plan to help resolve the issues we had with the DDA. And kind of put this into context, we're projecting in this, this current fiscal year, the total revenues will be about $342,000. And we're projecting next year to be $1.2 million worth of revenue. So the development plan appears to be working, and so therefore, this budget in future budget years is primarily to provide funds to service those bond issues which were issued by the city. And there will be some, some funds left over and that will be dedicated towards tax tribunal, $100,000 a year, some audit fees. $100,000 a year, some audit fees, and approximately $100,000 above and below that for street island maintenance, and the city's general fund will make up the difference to provide that enhanced maintenance of the corridor. And then in further years out, we're projecting that the DDA will have more revenues, and we'll be able to pay that back to the city and then provide maintenance on their own. So I think what's really a good thing about this is it shows that the bond situation with the DDA was resolved and with a positive direction.
Questions for Mr. Miller? Councilman Campbell, did you want to move the resolution?
Sure. I'll move I-8 ahead for approval as it's described on our yellow sheet.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve I-8 as presented on the yellow sheet at the table this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-9 is the 2013-14 Budget Amendment Number Three, Year-End Budget Adjustments, with an introduction by Thomas Darling, the Director of Financial Services. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. We've just set our financial future with the adoption of the 2015 three-year budget. Now typically, what we'll do is we'll circle around and start to wind down our 2014 fiscal year. Part of that is looking at what we did through developing the 2015 budget, at what our study sessions reviewed and some of what our estimates reviewed of where we thought we were going to be for 2014. What you have in front of you is the results of some of those estimates and our study sessions. Probably the most notable one is the Troy Rocks, Road Rock, Roads Rock Program, in which there is consensus of accelerating that project with a $2.5 million interest into the capital fund as from a transfer from the general fund. So that's the major thing that you'll see on your amending the 2014 budget. A couple other things that came to light is clearly our building inspection revenues, along with our fees for our contracted services with SafeBuild have increased, and you see that, both the revenues and the building inspection fees, amendment for those type of things, along with our engineering services. We see about a $260,000 request for that, and that's really based on the amount of building road inspections that we're seeing, really from private development, as opposed to, I think what was mentioned here was the Troy's Road Rock, Roads Rock Program, which is not correct. It's more for our private subdivision-type road inspections that we're looking for, that we've seen and we've discussed during our budget sessions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Darling? Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Like to move I-9 as printed?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick that we approve I-9 as printed in the agenda. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-10 is a request for amendment to the Oakland County Solid Waste Plan-Rizzo Environmental Services with an introduction by Tim Richnick, Department of Public Works Director.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Mr. Richnick.
Yeah, and I take full responsibility for this. There's a technical error here where we didn't include the resolution in the agenda. So Mr. Dennis Cowan is here, who maybe new to some of you, or maybe some of you know him from previous discussions, but I thought if Mr. Richnick was still here, we could still have the discussion and then maybe table this till next month. We do have a meeting next Monday night, so if that's acceptable, maybe Mr. Richnick could introduce it and what exactly it is, and then Mr. Cowan could also answer questions from his standpoint. So, thank you, Tim.
Is it your intent to pull this resolution as well?
We might as well do them both together. They're very related, and Tim, Mr. Richnick's going to tell you why.
Good evening, Tim.
Good evening. The solid waste plan for every county within the state of Michigan is enacted by the state. It's a long, convoluted process, and in order to make any changes to that, to make an amendment, it has to be brought forward, it has to be approved by the host community, which in this case is the city of Pontiac, it has to be approved by the Oakland County Solid Waste Management Planning Committee and by the Oakland County Commissioners. They have all authorized this amendment to the plan, and then in addition to that, two-thirds of all communities in Oakland County have to vote to have the amendment go into effect, and that is what we were going to bring forward to you tonight. And in addition to that, one of the things that was brought to our attention in the counties is that the plan is to be updated every five years. It had not, because there wasn't really a lot of activity, so the county didn't initiate anything, and so what we're asking in the second resolution, it'll come back to you next Monday, is that we have a resolution asking the county to do that after this amendment process is complete and without delay. So that's the crux of what we're speaking about tonight, and then I was going to have Mr. Cowan come up and speak on, you know, their planned amendment and answer any questions for you. Dennis?
Good evening. Did you want to speak this evening or wait till the resolution comes back or?
I'd like to if I could. Unfortunately, I am scheduled to be, they haven't told me, I'm either going to Orient Township or Novi next Monday. So if I could answer questions now on this, or if I could just tell you briefly what this is really about. What it is about is a combination of enhancing recycling in the county and an economic development project. Pontiac has approved for Rizzo Environmental to put on the old Fiero plant site 38 acres contaminated, sent over to the Razor Trust as part of the toxic GM assets. It's laid there doing nothing, although it was recently almost totally demolished except for parts of two buildings. What it will become with the approval, this next step of the process, will be not only a waste transfer facility, which will take about 10% out of the waste stream and out of the landfill, which is very important, those are big numbers, and it will also then allow the transfer of that waste to be done with less gasoline and less wear and tear on our roads, because they'll consolidate four or five trucks into one. The second component will be a single-stream recycling facility, which is actually where you process the recyclables. You know, they come in, they get washed, the glass gets broken up. Then the third component will be a citizens' drop-off recycling center for the people of Pontiac. They've never had a permanent location. Their current waste hauler won't do it. So the city council, as part of our host city agreement, has asked that we would do that at no charge to Pontiac, and Rizzo's agreed. But very importantly, to Pontiac, and I want to tell you, the Pontiac City Council, we've really worked closely together, and they get it on this project. Part of what they're going to get is through the host city agreement, about $500,000 a year in fees as a result of the tonnage once it ramps up. So we're really doing, I think, three positive things here. The reuse of an old industrial building that isn't going to come back, and that has been primarily, you know, almost substantially demolished. Then secondly would be helping the city of Pontiac. You know, they're out of, they don't have an emergency manager, they're on step two, which is a transition review board, and hopefully to get out of that soon. But this will go a long way towards assisting them. And then finally, enhancing the recycling in the county. As the governor recently announced, Michigan is only doing about 14% of the recycling they could do. He's announced an initiative. This fits, we've already talked to people in the governor's office, this fits right into the sweet spot of what they're trying to do and what they're trying to accomplish for economic development. So we would urge you to approve it. I understand there was a little glitch. What we need to prove next week is the county resolution, the proposed resolution, and then the second resolution. I was at all of the solid waste planning committee meetings, and by the way, we got a vote up there, 11 to 1, so that was pretty good. And then unanimous vote of the board of commissioners on a bipartisan basis for this. So what the second resolution will do is urge the county and the planning committee to do a total review, which hasn't been for 15 years. There hasn't been any review in 15 years. So Rizzo doesn't have a dog in that fight, but we support that concept, we understand it. Got to get appropriation out of the county board, that's probably the biggest challenge that we have on that, but if next week on the consent agenda you could approve those two items, we'd be deeply appreciative. I know the city of Pontiac would be grateful for your assistance in this regard. So if there's any questions about the project, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from council?
No.
Thank you.
Well, it's nice to be here with a smaller crowd and not as much controversy. Thank you very much.
Same here.
And I'll thank you in advance for your vote next week. Thank you.
And we will have this back to you next week with all the detail.
So we will pull I-10 this evening. Our next item of business is I-11, a request to set dates for closed sessions for the city manager and city attorney evaluations. Wish Councilman Fleming was here so that we could make sure that dates are compatible for everyone. How much time would the city manager and the city attorney need? Would one be willing to go next week?
I don't want to speak for Lori, but she doesn't want to speak for me. I bet we would. This is just the suggestion at the last evaluation, because you wanted it six months later. Six months fell knee-deep in the budget process, so that's why we're here tonight. So you can either do it next meeting or in June.
Councilman Teetz?
If it's okay with them, let's get her done.
Typically, we do it one session and one the next. So if it would be okay, we would do the city manager next week and the city attorney the following June 2nd meeting.
And?
City Attorney Bloom.
Would that be after, as part of the closed session after the, I mean, as part of the end of the regular meeting then?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody, everybody okay with that?
It's good.
If for some reason Councilman Fleming has an issue with either one of those dates, we'll talk to him and adjust. So I will move the resolution I-11, that city council shall meet in closed session on May 19, 2014. At, do we say 7:30 PM?
Yeah. Mayor, you really only need, shall meet in closed session on 5/19 of 2014, and then you don't need the rest of that phrase in the council boardroom, and then start up with pursuant to MCL 15.268. So you can delete the phrase that says, has the time.
Okay. So move that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session on May 19, 2014 pursuant to MCL 15.268, subsection A and H, MCL 15.243G for the evaluation of the city manager, and that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session on June 2, 2014 in the council boardroom pursuant to MCL 15.268A and H, MCL 15.243G for the evaluation of the city attorney.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we set dates for closed session for the city manager and city attorney as indicated by the chair. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone at the table wish to pull on a consent agenda item? I'm going to ask to pull J-8 to talk about the no parking zone on Witherby and J-4. So I will move the resolution that Detroit City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of J-4 and J-8, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items.
Second.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Campbell that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exemption, exception of items J-4 and J-8, which shall be considered after the consent agenda. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I asked to pull J-4, and I really only meant to pull J-4C, but I have it as J-4D.
Okay. We put C, I think, on the one, but it's J-4D.
It's D?
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson brought it to our attention that if we're going to be redoing Fire Station Number Four, what is the need to spend money on a brick renovation for Fire Station Number Four? So after consideration and determining that it was not a safety issue, we will amend J-4D to include due to future billing of the new fire station, we will amend it to $1,500 budgeted for that station will be removed from the bid contract, bringing the total contract down to $14,000. So I will move the resolution with that amendment to the resolution.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson that we approve J-4A, B, C, and D as presented this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I asked to remove J-8 because I wasn't comfortable without additional information from our public safety departments about removing a no parking zone on Witherby, so I'm going to ask to remove item number four from J-8, and we'll get some additional information from the public safety departments regarding removing that no parking zone if it's okay with council.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson that we approve J-8 with the removal of item number four. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes the consent agenda items. If you were here for a consent agenda item, they have all been approved this evening. If you were here for a consent agenda item, they have all been approved this evening. Does anybody need a break? Break, anybody? Our next item of business is memorandums and future council agenda items, and K two A is the Film and Video Ordinance Amendment with an introduction by Brenda Carter, the interim assistant to the city manager. Good evening. Were you going, were you going to speak on this, or?
No, not this week. I was going to bring a full introduction next, at the next meeting. This was just for information purposes only.
Thank you. I read it, it's, it's good to go. Next item of business is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. James Savage, Troy resident? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, members of the city council. Okay, I'm looking at this paper regarding the goals, and number 12 is increased lines of communication with Troy schools. And the, as I announced last meeting, the Troy High School Senior Citizen Plum was held on April 21st, 24th. I was there representing the Troy Senior Citizens. Troy Times representatives were there taking photos, but I did not see any city official there whatsoever. So I just sometimes wonder what is quite meant by lines of communication with Troy schools. The annual Senior Citizen Plum is an ideal opportunity for informal and casual communications with the school staff and the students, and it worked out very well, as it usually does. It was better this year than ever. And another item, this paper was delivered to my door over the weekend, or Friday, and it's regarding, it refers to a proposed rezoning of property on Livinoy's. And it reminded me of an issue many years ago in the same area, when the John Zell administration used the questionable methods that allowed the homeowner in the area to almost lose her home. And that was in the summer of the year 2000. And I will, I'm certainly ready to defend any words such as questionable. I don't have the exact date of what occurred at that meeting, but I will find it if anybody wants to look it up on the, on the transcript. This proposed rezoning property borders city-owned parkland. For some reason, developing that parkland seems to stay on the back burner, and this was talked about way back, 15 years ago, when we had lots of money. But that parkland was always put on the back burner. And I would like to remind city council that Troy residents are very protective of their parkland, and I am very concerned regarding any possible negative effect on our parkland. And I hope that you will look at this very closely as it develops, because what I see would not be conducive with the parkland. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is council comments. Are there any council comments this evening? Mayor Protem Henderson?
I feel to mention, I, when I spoke to Councilman Fleming earlier today, he, he wanted us to know that he was in support of the budget as well, so, I just thought I'd bring that up.
He indicated that to me also. In fact, I believe he said that he would vote yes on all items on the agenda this evening if you were here. Any other council comments? Just a quick comment, congratulations to Sam Ramorato for being inducted into the Public Fleet Hall of Fame. I think that's quite an honor for him, and I know there were 10 inductees this year, and he was one of the 10, and congratulations to him. He's certainly an asset to this city. Are there any questions about reports on the agenda this evening? I don't see anyone signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members outside of the city of Troy. There are no study items this evening, no closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.